Good evening. This meeting of the Nottaway County Board of Supervisors will now come to order. Tonight's meeting is a joint work session of the Board of Supervisors and the Nottaway County School Board. The Chair of the School Board, would you like to point the meeting to order?
Yes. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Mr. Ball, would you provide your presentation?
Yes, yes ma'am. Let's go to Father. Lord, again, we come together and Father, we just ask you to forgive us for our sins, the ones we don't recognize, but ones we actually do on purpose as well, Father. You know our hearts. Father, we lift up Ms. Skyer. I understand she's leaving the school system, but she's got a child that's sick. And Father, we know that our family members, our loved ones, they really come first. It's a blessing from them. And we thank you for, we thank her for all her service here with Nottaway County School System. Lord, as many of them there are hurting, we know that some of them, a lot of people out there now may be homeless, may be hungry. We lift them up to you as well. Father, and as we come together, give us a heart where we can collaborative together to do the best thing for the county and for our children. And Father, we thank you for all that you do for us in Jesus Christ, we pray. In God's people's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you change this work's agenda? May I need a vote to approve the agenda as presented? Or will you let it? Emotion has second all in favor and can you pass? At this point, we're going to turn the meeting over to the school board for its presentation on the budget.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi, I have provided a few slides about the information that our board of supervisors members, you would recognize that this is much of the same information that was presented during our last budget work session. There is some additional information to the Board of Supervisors for questions that were brought to mind since you got Mr. Passan prior to this meeting. So, the topics for the session tonight, we're going to talk about the local funding requirements. That was a question that stood the difference between the local match and the local effort. We'll talk about the fiscal year 2023 budget that the school board has proposed. Average daily membership was a question that was asked. So, we have some figures for that. Also, there was a request for a listing of capital improvement items and an update on what grants the school system has. Then we'll have a summary slide of the proposed budget that lays everything out, future planning, and the details and reminders. So, in building our fiscal year 2023 budget, we worked with a few assumptions. The first, based on the information from the state, there's an increased funding from the local government because the local composite index increased from 25.97 to 26.6, which basically means that the locality is asked to provide more to the school system for every hundred dollars provided by the state than it did year before. We built our budget based on a student enrollment of 1,750 students, which is 30 fewer students in fiscal year 22. Our insurance rates increased by two percent, but the budget we have provided absorbs those costs or does not pass on to our employees. And our DRS rates were calculated at 16.16%. The local composite index, or the LCID, refers to the locality's ability to pay. That figure is determined by the state and the calculated using three indicators. I have provided those indicators and the weight given to each one in the slide for you. The three indicators are the true value for real property that's weighted at 50%, the adjusted gross income weighted at 40%, and taxable retail sales weighted at 10%. So, the state views that there was an increase in these numbers according to the state, which resulted in a slight increase in the LCID from 25.97 to 26.6%. We have referred to the locality share of funding to the school division as both local effort and local match. And one question raised was what's the difference between the two? So, I attempt to explain that to you. And this is one of those slides where the information is included on the slide, but you also have that information a bit larger as the individual paid themselves. So, the local effort is the local share of the cost of the standards of quality. And I don't know if you recall, but when we had our joint work session, I guess a couple of years ago now, I talked about the standards of quality. And I've also spoken with the school board members about the standards of quality as well because the standards of quality is the ratio-based way that the state funds positions in schools. The standards of quality do not fund every position in the school division. They fund those that the state have identified. So, for example, if the state says that there should be a ratio of 18 to one in a classroom, then in a third grade classroom, just let's just use that as an example, and we have 15 to one, which is a lower ratio, the state, I might have done that backwards, but the state will fund the 18. Anything that we have beyond what the state puts in the ratio is funded by the locality. So, a real example of this is when it comes to assistant principals. You've heard me lament this a number of times. We only have one assistant principal currently, and that's at the high school because the state's ratio for a principal, an assistant principal, is, let's say, 400 to one. Right, well, the high school meets that ratio, but our primary school, our middle school, and our intermediate school does not have 400 students. So, the standards of quality funds the one assistant principal that's at the high school, but not an assistant principal at the other schools. So, if we were to have those assistant principals, their salaries and benefits would be paid out of local funds. So, the local effort is the local share of the cost for funding the standards of quality. And based on the budget that we presented, what you have is from the state calculator. Again, based on an enrollment of 1,750 students, this shows that the local share for the standards of quality programs is $3,724,660. Quite similarly, there is the local match. The local match is the locality required match for state incentive and lottery-funded programs, not standards of quality. And so, the incentive, state incentive programs are listed here, include some at-risk funding, school meal, and that doesn't apply to us, re-bench marking, hold harmless, technology PSA, those are included in incentive programs. And then lottery-funded programs include at-risk, early reading intervention, K-3 primary class size reduction, school breakfast, you know, online, that's a little out of the readiness. These little lines are hard to see. And then infrastructure and operations for people applications. So, when you take the two costs from the local share from the incentives and the lottery funded, that totals $1,691,444. And the next slide just puts it all together. When you put the local effort and the local match together, between the two, the total of the locality share is $5,391,691. And that is for the locality to fund each of the items included in the state's budget under those categories.
Is this, can we have, yeah, we have conversation here already. Doug Grimes, you know, you gotta slow down Steve Borne, brain catching up with you. I'm catching up with you. So, when, let's talk about, like, which are like grants? So, when you, when you, on the school system possible grant, is it always a local match?
No, not always.
Not always, it's all, yeah.
These are grants.
I'm sorry.
They, too, are not actual grants. We haven't gotten to grants yet.
Okay, so, but let me, let me ask you this then. When the required match for state incentive and lottery fund programs, the $1,691,455, that's, that, that has to be, I'm gonna ask this, it still goes back to the composite index where you got, okay, you're trying to, I'm not sure how to ask the question. But it goes back, and so, you have to think I have this many students, but if you don't have that many students, you save money and you're lucky.
The state, the state will reduce funding. So, we built our budget based on a specific number of students.
Right.
And if we end up with fewer students than that, then the state actually allocates us space upon our actual student enrollment.
I got you. Has the numbers went down with COVID?
Well, I have.
Return from COVID.
Well, our numbers have been, our annual average daily membership has been declining for the last five years. I have that information in here, too.
Got you, I got you, I'm sorry.
You are just fine.
Thank you, thank you ma'am.
But this is all local, this is all from the local funds. The overall budget is larger than probably expected because of grants, which we will, which has broken down, has been broken down also. But we received quite a bit of funding from grants. So, next up is our fiscal year 2023 budget initiative. And this is the information that, these are the things that we had in the budget that are needed. We have the funding for the billion-dollar technical center, support for that a couple of years ago. Was it a couple of years ago? We met as a joint orders, met in the gym at Berkeley Elementary School and pledged support for the continued growth and expansion of the billion-dollar technical center. And as a part of that, ANTC has put into its five-year plans to add two classes a year to try to increase student enrollment and opportunities for students. And in line with that, for the upcoming school year, school year 22, 23, ANTC has in its budget to add two classes, building trades and early childhood. And so, the total funding estimate for that is $409,806, which is $104,954 more than it was in the current fiscal year. And this is above the line item that we have in our budget for ANTC. So, we have a line item in our budget specifically for ANTC of $188,000. But ANTC relies solely on funds from Nottaway County School Board and the Amelia County School Board to run its entire operation. And that, so what they do is they build their budget, and then they do a 60/40 split. Nottaway is 60%, Amelia is 40%, and that total comes to the schools. Well, we have in our budget as a line item, $188,000 of that cost. And I'm going to step out and say that the reality is, ANTC is a separate school. It's not a part of Nottaway County Public Schools. It has its own state, its own school code with the Department of Virginia. But it is reliant upon Nottaway County Public Schools and Amelia County Public Schools to fund it. There are needs at Amelia Technical Center. Think about it, kids are there all day long. We have students who take a class in the morning and then students who take a class in the afternoon, and you have a principal there. Well, if I'm lamenting assistant principals here, there's no assistant principal there. We have school counselors in our schools here. They don't have a school counselor there. And I'm not complaining, I'm just using that as an example to show that we have a school that is operating solely on the funds that are provided from the two school systems. And we have, and they have HVAC systems that need repair and maintenance that needs to be done. I will say that the Nottaway County Public Schools maintenance team provides services to ANTC on basically an income basis. We provide the service, we don't charge any more. But their budget has to absorb, and I'm stressing this because it's really, this increase is important. The budget at ANTC has to absorb custodial costs, maintenance costs, capital line item costs, as well as the salaries and benefits for those employees. Our students are benefiting from their time at the Amelia Technical Center this year. This month, our students have taken certification exams. 100% of culinary arts students received their serve safe certification. When we take all of the students who have taken the certification exams so far, 94% of them have passed, and so they are doing some of the things over there. And we look forward to the opportunities to expand. So, the funding of the increase for ANTC is significantly needed. The budget also is built with a salary increase of 5%. If you recall, before Governor Northam left office, his biennial budget had a little more than 10% as a total increase, 5% over each year of the biennium, so we followed that. And that 5% would be across the board. I talked earlier about the standards of quality. Well, the 5% from the state that goes towards the salary increase would go towards those SOP positions, and the positions that are not in the SOPs would be paid over and over again. We also note that there's a minimum wage increase that is due to a current January commitment and built that minimum wage increase into our budget so that we're not making that adjustment in the middle of the year. And the increase is from $11 an hour to $12 an hour. I referenced previously, assistant principals, we were able to build into the budget initiatives that includes an assistant principal at each of the four schools that do not currently have one. We also have built into the budget a CTE coordinator to assist the high school and ANTC students with identifying workforce opportunities, working with the community for internship opportunities, work-based learning opportunities, and to just assist also with the CTE advisory committee and any other thing necessary related to helping our students graduate from high school with skill certifications and the ability to go into either the workforce to higher education or into the armed services if that is necessary. And we have in our budget a school social worker position. We have put a lot about programs, we've put a lot about the mental health needs of our students and our community, and so a school social worker will go a long way towards assisting with that, and that has been built in here. And we were able to do this without requesting any additional funds. All right, then next we have our average daily membership. Our average daily membership is based upon the March 30 number that we have, count we have for students. And March 30 of this year, we had 1,722.13 average daily membership. You will note that that is down from the spring of 2021 of 1,778.15, and historically, the enrollment of the average daily membership has declined. Unfortunately, the trend, the downtrend continues. We did have enrollment projections provided, and it does appear that we are looking, the trend continues downward with forecasts of 1,700 free students for the 22, 23 student year. We hope that's not true and would much prefer to be closer to that 17,000. We appreciate the board's honor, the request from the last budget cycle to return a portion of any unsaid funds at the end of the year for the creation of capital improvement on item. That turned out to be very beneficial and fortuitous because the capital improvement on item will be used to pay for part of the HVAC replacement at the high school that is necessary. But there are a number of other capital improvement needs. The newest building we have is the high school, and it's not quite as known as it could be. And so, when the, as the building's aged, the materials and supplies, the HVAC units and other items find themselves in need of replacement. And we have quite a number of capital improvement items that are on our list of things to take care of when we have funding available for it. So, the request, the question was asked of us, what types of things do we know are necessary for capital improvement? For the members of the school board, not too long ago, I had a meeting with Mr. Passan and Ms. Tomer where we, the board, recall that the Board of Supervisors requested that the school board agree to have a comprehensive financial review conducted. And if the board agrees to that, then there would be a return, partial return of unused funds again. Well, as a course of that, we think there was conversation about, well, what are capital improvement items that are necessary? And perhaps this financial review will show some areas where we can either work together or due to a larger need of services, reduce some of the costs associated with it. And the request was made at that time for a list of possible capital improvement items that we have. And you'll see listed here that there's a hot water heater at the middle school that may need to be replaced, replacement of two air handling units at Roxdale Primary, the restoration, or or replacement of two flat sections of the roof at the high school. And this is separate from what we already have planned for the high school. Payment for parking lots. I got a call not too long ago from a parent about a pothole in the parking lot and the desire to see that fixed. Replacement of boilers on the 500 hall at the high school. It's noted here that no juniors are 27 years old. And replacement of rooftop units at the high school. And this is not, this is above the two that are being replaced. And then the last item on the, on this, in this section are the grants. This is a listing of the grants that, of the large grants that we receive. And you'll notice that that list is quite extensive. Nottaway County Public Schools is very lucky to have a grant writer who was very proficient at getting our grants approved. She did speak for the Board of Supervisors not too long ago and teach all about grants. So, I'm not going into that, but I did provide a list of the grants that we have. Just as a couple of reminders, though, our entitlement grants are the grants that we refer to as Title I, II, III, IV, A, and V. And those grants, we have to apply for them every year. It's an approval process through the Department of Education. And it's really important to note two things about entitlement grants. One, they have a supplement, not supplant provision. What that means in the simplest form is those grants are to provide the extra above and beyond what is already the locality's requirement to provide. So, another way to think about supplement and not supplant is to think of an ice cream sundae. If the ice cream sundae is the ice cream and the chocolate strawberry that you like to make your sundae, then the supplement, that's your, that's your base, that's, and then anything above that, the cherry on top, the whipped cream, the nuts, whatever you like on that, that's the supplement part. Because it's not required, it's the extra. And the other important piece to remember about the entitlement grants is that they are on a reimbursement basis. And so, when we apply for grants, we have to be very specific about what the funds will be used for, when a reimbursement request is made, it has to align to what was approved in the grant. If you spend funds not aligned to what was approved in the grant, the reimbursement will not be approved. And so, we can't use grant money obtained for one reason to buy something else. So, for example, a title, a grant written for professional development cannot be used to buy fuel because those are two completely separate things. And so, we always have to be mindful about what the request is, how the grant was written, what was approved, and then the reimbursement process for that. We have a number of competitive grants, which means they are not automatic. They are, we apply for them, the number of applications are reviewed and evaluated, and then awards are determined. And we also received a significant amount of funding from the grants that came forward approved as a result of the pandemic. So, that gives us to the summary of the proposed budget. And the proposed budget, our regular operating budget, which is locality and state is $23,883,198. When we throw in special programs and grants, that's that long list that I just talked about, that is $5,943,864. Food services listed here because we wanted to show all of our funding sources. I think in the past, the funding has only reflected the local portion of the budget, local and state. We wanted to provide a clear picture, a whole picture of the funding sources that we have. Food service is self-funded, it does not receive funds from the locality, it operates off of what it raises and then what is reimbursed by the USDA for student meals. And that proposed is $1,303,656. Future planning, we have a number of grants, we have some positions to help us in our schools to defund it through grants. An example of that is a second clerical person or second secretary for our school offices, one for each school. Those are currently in a grant to be paid for because we know that our schools need additional support in its main offices. When those grants are gone, unless those positions are absorbed in the local budget, then the positions are gone. So, that's something that we need to think about and plan for as we move forward. There is an additional minimum wage increase expected in January of 2025, so we have to account for that. And we are continuing to work to adjust our pay scales so that they are, they are competitive within our region, but also they keep our people on a salary that allows them to have some increase as time goes by. We did take into consideration some budget constraints that we were anticipating. One of them was level funding, recognizing that will be increased of the LCI. The level funding is probably an oxymoron, but it's been along the lines of providing the full amount of this locality's requirement based on the state funding. We are, of course, asking again for the return of funds for the capital improvement line so that work can be done to keep our buildings operating in a manner that is efficient and comfortable. And then, of course, the funding for ANTC is really important, which I've talked about quite extensively. A few notes that I shared with the school board. We do have a functional facility study that is ongoing and is rounding up, and that study included a walkthrough and discussions about each of our buildings that are currently in use at schools, as well as Berkeley Elementary School, and the buildings that are no longer being used on a regular basis or even at all by the school system. Then includes the old maintenance building approved and the old intermediate school, the two buildings in Roxdale. The study also included a walkthrough of our athletic facility, that's the athletic fields at the complex, and the Luther Stadium, as well as the field that's attached, well, adjacent to the old maintenance building. And the board was also notified of an inquiry from the town to improve the volume of the old maintenance building there. It is not used, rest goes very quickly, the windows are boarded up, and so there have been questions about what's been approved of that. So, all of that is just a look and what will be included in part of the report from Architectural Fund and Construction Conference. And that is the end of my prepared remarks.
We made a comment on the budget projections for 22, 23. Projected revenue from the state is up on the prior year, which declining enrollment applies the state, applies the state revenue projection.
The state has actually pledged going forward a lot more money towards K-12 schools across the state. And part of that is adding extra money to, even at a lower ADM, we're still getting more money than what we've gotten this fiscal year.
Father, as you know, the state still hasn't paid the share. I don't know what the, I don't know what state, any across the nation, but it's not very high. Probably would be paying education.
No, I don't know the answer to that, but I know when I look at our budget, the government target of our spending comes from grants. And then the state is slightly one of them, the state is one of the locality because of the related LCI. But the state generally simply, and the current governor, office speak about the emphasis now on education and increasing funding to K-12 education. But the state generally simply, and the current governor often speak about the emphasis now on education and increasing funding to K-12 education.
The current history of 21, 22, how much did you use the school system restriction case?
I think also done from beginning of pandemic to the last grant, I think it's four this year. I think it's close to $20,000. And I did reference when talking about grants, when we apply for them, we have to be very specific and the grant is approved a specific way. Well, the pandemic funds were similar in that manner in that there were some restrictions that were placed on how the CARES Act funds could be used. So there was one version of additional funding that said that it had to be, the vast majority of the funds had to be directed towards making up for the loss of learning. There was a restriction on the percentage that could be used towards a single construction cost or maintenance cost. And so even though it's the, the funding for the pandemic is a large number, the federal government did put some restrictions in place as, as to how those funds would be used. Again, really focusing a lot on making up for the loss of learning. There have been some additional grants that have come through as a result of the pandemic with specific focus areas like construction. There was an opportunity to apply funds to go towards school buses, construction, H-Bet. And so you have to apply specifically for those. But again, very specific in how those funds can be used. It's not, hey, here's a total of $10 million, just deal with it, whatever it is that you need to do.
Were you able to direct some of that toward capital improvements?
No, the, the, well, some went towards the H-Bet. So we got the H-Bet grant, which is going partially towards the high school H-Bet. There was some other H-Bet and children upgrades between S2 and S3. Also some additions to the playgrounds. And then there's some order for actually ginseng on the blocks and buildings. It's one of the requirements coming from the state. Our marshal is upgrading all the emergency exit blocks. So, you know, we have funding built into the S2 grant actually helps with that. But it's minimal because you can't go over a certain percentage. Once you go over a certain percentage, then you become ineligible for other grants. So the vast majority of our funding from the pandemic has gone towards academics. So we offer tutoring opportunities for students. We have expanded after-school and Saturday opportunities for students. We have tutors that work with students after school as well as we have a program that is basically a one-to-one tutoring opportunity that folks can call and get help, really 24/7 if that's what they need. And other way, other opportunities, other uses like that that really go directly back to the classroom and Students Union as opposed to using it for, again, the majority has to be for the making up of the loss of learning.
Dr. Francis, the question was specific in reference to, was there money set aside that could have been used towards capital improvement? And yes, there was.
Yes, I'll answer that, but I wanted to provide in the emphasis that the funding from the pandemic is the majority of it has to be used.
What was the total amount that was set aside for H-Bet from, going from that $10 million?
For the high school, between what was an S3 and H-Bet grant, that was roughly around $558,000. And then we used a capital freedom line item to make up the difference to be able to do all four of those two things.
So, so the bulk of the $10 million was actually spent in the classroom?
It's still being spent because the bulk of that $10 million, not all of that has, has ended. So we believe, I believe we have until 2024 for some of them to spend it. So there's certain amounts allocated for each year to be able to, to be funding with the tutoring and some of the other programs that March is trying to get running.
Do you know how much is out there before your upcoming fiscal year, 2023?
Currently, what we built into the budget as carryover was $750,000 from S2 and $2 million from S3. Those are estimates. So that could be a little more. We try to be a little soft sided so you're not having to subtract any budget. But that's what we have currently as estimated carryover. There could be more. We got one additional S2 grant in Shandery, which was after the budget was built. That carryover now is not being funded yet. And that's probably close to $890,000, that was carried over.
Are the, so the S2 grants were all part of the pandemic funding?
Correct.
Ms. Germain, I ask a question.
Oh, yes.
Y'all have a chance to evaluate how close you're going to be when it comes to the $230,000. I know last year we both talked about trying to do a needs-based budget in anticipation to eliminate that large amount. Any idea whether that's going to be successful?
I'm tracking it very closely. I think we will be close, but I should know more other than a couple of weeks once we get to the end of April, which is really broken, yeah.
So S2, what do you think of it?
Estimating, I'm going to guess maybe, because we've had unfilled positions this year, maybe $100,000 would be my estimate. But those positions are still there. But it's, the teams are still having a lot of pressure.
So we'll spend all of the $400,000?
That's my estimate right now, yes.
Capital improvement, how much money would you say?
So, so what we carried over from last fiscal year to this was $500,000. It was what was added to that line item. That entire $500,000 will go to help with the replacement here at the H-Bet at the high school. So there are other capital improvement needs that we need to be addressed moving forward. So hopefully we continue to advance, we can continue to address those. I don't want to be fanning problems, I'd like to just try to fix them.
Follow-up developers from baseball plans, what about this year? Do you have a sense of what might be left over this year that you would carry over? If I may, purple one, purple one stick around a little bit. The technical side, just generally, if additional classes are going to result in additional expenses, regardless of what type of class we're buying, they're going to be increased as well. If you built in two new classes. Any area where they cover the intensive facilities study?
They are in the process of completing the final components now and they hope to have a draft ready by end of May, early June.
Will that give you an estimate, a projection or a suggestion on what to do and how much it might cost? And what problem? You're building in the minimum wage increase beginning July one, it doesn't take effect until January?
There's a reason for that.
That's also asked, that's the first question.
This past year, when we, when we had a minimum wage increase, it only affected our cafeteria workers. The next minimum wage increase affects probably like four pay grades total, which is cafeteria, some maintenance, custodial, but there's also the trickle-down effect. Because when you do the increase for all the people on the pay scales, well, that means those who are on grades two, three, or four are now making the same as people on grades five, six, and seven. So there's that trickle-down effect. So it made more sense just to go ahead and build it on the front side so that you didn't have that big of a mid-year change that would have to take effect. Try to get everything fixed for, you know, payroll December, January, be very hectic. So it's just made more sense to try to do it.
From the state's?
From, yes.
Dr. Drabz, from day one, you've always said we need assistant principals at all the schools. I don't, I don't know that much about that. What I'm asking, what is the, and this is probably, it's not a question, but I was wondering, what is the, what is the duties of assistant principal? And would the duties of assistant principal be the same that Blackstone and Crewe Primary would be at the middle school?
On the surface level, yes. So that's the, the responsibilities of school administration is to be both instructional leaders and managers of their buildings. So translate it on a daily basis, that could include the principal. Right now, we only have principals in the majority of our schools, right? So that principal is responsible for getting into classrooms on a regular basis, conducting observations, which are a minimum of 30 minutes, and roll off rooms, which are a minimum of 10 minutes. They also are dealing with student disciplinary matters as well as any parents who come in to see them and anything else. And meeting with teachers, attending team meetings, department meetings, meeting faculty meetings. That's all in the course of the, the day for the running of the building. And assistant principal will assist with that. So if I have a building of 25 teachers and I'm, and they all have to be observed as a part of their evaluation system, then we can have a process with assistant principals where maybe the principal is responsible for math and science and the assistant principal is responsible for social studies and reading. And so those observation walk, and responsibilities could be divided. When it comes, most often we think of assistant principal, we think of assistant principals with student disciplinary matters. While there also can be a model where it's a, it's a divided responsibility, especially at elementary level, or it, but it provides, it gives the school administration the opportunity to focus on instruction and not so much the management, which from the state's perspective, instructional leadership is the priority. But we know from a realistic perspective, we also have to be mindful of the actual function of the building, which includes school safety, student safety, and the general comfort and management of the building. That's a lot for one person.
Now, yeah, and the reason I ask you, sometimes the general public, you know, people's perspective is sometimes what they think is the truth. Which is not always true. Anyway, but, you know, it's almost, sometimes it would be, it could be perceived as, you know, we invest a lot of money in administration, but not in classroom with the teachers and, and instruction. See what I'm saying? There'll be some people who look at it that way. That's why I really asked the question, so I can answer the question.
Well, the, the teachers, so we did, we have a budget committee and that includes representatives from the schools, includes teachers from the schools. And the teachers talk to their peers about what items they want to see included in the budget. And it was nice to note that the schools actually asked for assistant principals. I met with a teacher today and that teacher said we need assistant principals. So it is not just something that is being asked for by principals or even central office, but the teachers recognize, quite frankly, that they need more support and when they want to have someone work with a student with whom they're having difficulty.
I would like to hear some, I would like to hear some from the school members, coordinators, everybody in the budget.
My comp can follow, we can say it's going to remain the same. We're not putting enough money into career and technical education. We're not educating all of our kids. We need trades in the career and technical education program that will take some of these kids that are not going to college, that are not thinking about going into the armed services. A big sector of our kids, the majority of our kids are graduating on May 28th. And not all of them are going to college. And not all of them are going into the, the sort of armed service. Early childhood, what's that going to pay? You spend that money, put that course into career technical education, what's that going to pay? What's the certification, what kind of job? Because when we spend taxpayers' money in education, we should think about kids getting out of school and being ready to go into the workforce. You can create a career and technical education coordinator position and pay somebody a nice salary, but they can't. I ain't going to say what Coach Bob used to say about the chicken salad. He made me that idea, but you get where I'm going, right? Because you're creating another position, career and technical education coordinator. And how are they going to take an unskilled person and get them a job that they can access sustained positions? A while back, we wasted time and money, we put in a criminal justice course program. What are you going to do to criminal justice course coming out of Oxford? You, you don't need to join the police force because they don't send you to the police academy anymore. It's not like you're getting a start. Until both of these boards hold, these boards themselves accountable for educating kids because you all provide money and you sure, you all should be concerned about how we're educating kids. I, I'm all for giving assistant principals, it's needed. But I'm tired of sitting here, here and here and not educating all of the kids. And I know that because I have a master's degree in education. Somebody help me out and afford me an opportunity to come back and give back. And we're not giving back, we're taking. We got great salaries in administration, everybody's making almost six figures at the school board, everybody's doing well. I don't mind that. But I, even if Amelia County doesn't want to put a course over there, if we can go through our school system and poll our kids, and really you can't do a lot of polling kids because 14, 15, 16, and 17-year-olds, a lot of them have no clue what they want to do. I was there one time and it wasn't the Bible, he told me, you want to go to college. He told me what I was going to do. Not everybody has that. So what I want to see us do, rather than wasting time and spending over 100 grand and getting a competent coming in and tell us what we need to do, I want to get some educated people here to make a decision. Either we buy in and fix ANC or we move to Burkefield and we take some of this money that we've actually more for and we renovate Burkefield because the ultimate plan is for kids that are focused in career and technical education, we have a lot of them that fail out of here, they drop out because they're not interested in the college course program. I would love to take Burkefield with the cafeteria there, turn it into a career and technical education program with computer repair, you can make great money. I can just get an A-plus certification by the time you leave, you start translating. If you get an A-plus certified, security certified, it's, it's easy, it's easy money. But we keep listening to people to educate kids that don't know. We did an H-Bet program. Put the H-Bet program in there and TC kids. Some of these kids that are low performing in school. in school, they can't do elementary, but they can do basic math, they can do English, and they can take a trade. It, I'm telling you, it's frustrating to me, because we come in here, we beg you all for money to do things, and I'll be honest, I don't wanna know on the budget, because there's nothing in there that's gonna help kids. This new program that they're talking about putting on, it's not gonna help kids get a job. I wanna see our kids come out of the program and be able to take care of themselves, not have to live with mom and daddy, but make fifteen, sixteen dollars and up, and be able to keep their lights on, pay their bills, and work. That's when we're doing our jobs there, here, in education. And until then, and it bothers me, because my kid is going to college, but I'm thinking about all of the other kids that everybody else is casting aside. Because you know you don't have anything for them. If they tell you they got something for them, they're lying. And it's easy to do, because we can track all of our kids. Let's track the kids that are going straight into the workforce and that are successful. Do you know what I'm putting on paper? But, you know, you gotta remember, now, when this first started, Mr. Bob was in the school system, ANTC had a budget. They had all of those courses over there. What happened to the money that was there? So it's like you took away the courses, you kept the money, and there's nothing for kids Don't keep giving us money, and we're not doing anything with it. We just wasted that crazy money. Hold us accountable. Make us put courses in, and make us show you something on paper for the money that you're That's my take.
I agree with Mr. Pettis that not all kids are gonna go to college, not all kids are gonna go into the workforce, and not all kids are gonna go into the military. Some kids will go to college, some kids will go into the military, some will go directly into the workforce. But I do want to provide some information that I did not provide previously about CTE and about how the two courses are selected, were selected that are included in the budget. The state requires that students be surveyed about their interest with CTE. That's true for ANTC and it's also true for the high school. We actually offer a large number of career technical education courses, we even combine the courses offered at the high school and those offered at ANTC. What sometimes, though, gets lost is that not every course that's considered a CTE course is a trade course. So for example, the JR OTC program is considered CTE. The agricultural science class is here, the financial class that all kids have to take as required by the state, the computer classes, the small animals, all of those are considered career technical education. So the way I view it is, the way the setup has to come is ANTC is like what I would call the lab school, with the large equipment and the hands-on, and the high school is predominant of the classes, the CTE courses that are classroom days. We would love to offer much more electives. Mr. Pettis is right, there are very limited opportunities in electives, period, for students and not less. But that goes back to a statement that Mr. Bowen said that wasn't about CTE, it was about assistant principals, but it's very similar in my mind. And that is, the more classes you offer, the smaller the class size. And so from the perspective of the public, if we have classes with only ten, fifteen kids in them, the question or the perception from the public will be, well, what are they doing with only ten kids in their class? The more electives we offer, the more teachers we have to hire, the smaller the classes likely will be. But we definitely need to increase the number of options for kids based upon their interests. We do assessments of the job market, that's required by the state when looking to add programs to CTE. But we also must survey the kids, and when we submit the information to the state, we have to include the information about what interests kids. Mr. Pettis also is right, kids don't know what they wanna do necessarily when they graduate from high school.
Some kids.
Some kids, excuse me, some kids don't know what they wanna do. I'm the mom of one who doesn't know what she wants to do. But even though we know where, sometimes we know where the job opportunities are, we can't just take and put a course in place that the students don't express an interest for the state or not, or create that. So those surveys are really important. So that's, and then we also, we do, we are required by the state also to track how our students do for a number of years after they graduate from high school. On, when we had graduation ceremonies last year, you know, the year before, when they were in the auditorium, when they were individualized, I got to see firsthand, one of the things that school counselors are required to do is to ask each kid before they leave, as a graduate, what their plans are after graduation. And then the schools have to try to track those kids down before a certain number of years after that to follow up, to see what they are doing. That is a requirement. We're not always successful in reaching all kids, but we do do some sort of survey of kids about what their activities are after they graduate from high school. So that's just a little bit more information about how the two courses were selected for the ANTC. Actually, there was a debate when the two classes were approved by the joint board as to which classes to offer. And Mrs. Harris shared information at that point about the survey results and what the students' interests were in their rankings in that process.
As I could, and I read Ohio, what Mr. Pettis said, in reference to the CTE courses. Well, at ANTC, two courses were added last year, and one of those courses that was added was color art course, that has taken off real well with our students, and our students are doing very well with color art course, which leads into a quick reading. And as we, there was a large debate in reference to what class we were adding, we didn't go over as the way it started. It went around for a while, for hours, to try to figure out exactly what students wanted for. But I heard something said just now by Dr. Landen, and I know the state reads on CTE classes, I was a CTE teacher. So a lot of CTE classes can't hold much when the kids in the class are gone, that's all they can hold in the class. So ten or fifteen kids in a class is actually where it needs to be. It needs to be ten or fifteen kids in the class that we move forward. But when I'm a graduate, and graduates out of the high school, when a graduate ain't of Amelia Naughton Technical Center, with a certified residential wire in electricity at Naughton Technical Center. And saying that, that didn't hinder me in anything, but the classes that we had over there, it was not twenty kids and no class in them. It was only ten or fifteen kids. But they had to build it in order for the kids to take interest in it. Because I didn't have any interest in electricity, but when I took the tool of the technical center, went into the electrical room, and talked to the instructor, I knew that I wanted to be a part of that class. That's how I got involved. Technical education is definitely something that's needed. I've been to several different school divisions. One of the biggest programs that I've seen take off anywhere is a welding program. And they, the welding programs that I've been involved with, they've taken off, and you have the shipyard coming to the school, including kids, taking them back. And we have to start investing that money into our students and allowing our students to see those opportunities. But if we continue to look at, hey, I understand we gotta have a survey, but we gotta start building some courses in and letting these kids see, and taking them out and seeing these opportunities that you can have. And as assistant principals, that's something that I've said from day one, sitting on this board, that's something that we need assistant principals to rebuild. And it's, you know, regardless of the ratio number that we need assistant principals to rebuild, that allows us to be serious.
I think I mentioned this at our last joint meeting with regards to CTE. Early in this century, the perception across the country was that every kid needs to go to college. And CTE began to take a backseat, bigger backseat, bigger backseat. And we're seeing the effects of that now, and rebuilding that program, which I think is absolutely essential, is gonna take time, and it's gonna take money. And I think we're off to a good start. If you go out and visit ANTC, and I would challenge each one of you to do that, it is absolutely amazing what Valerie Harris' first staff are doing. And I think the best is yet to come. Unfortunately, it's some bad money.
I agree with some of what Mr. Pettis said, some of what Mr. Phob said, some of what Dr. Brian said. What I want you to take away from here, and whether or not you or anybody on our board puts value in the surveys, the children have had a voice, and their voice in the surveys said that these were the two top programs that they wanted. We have created a program in the past, when I was first on the board, that we thought would be interesting with the kids, and within two years, it's diminished. These surveys that are done are state-required, but it also gives students a voice for us and for you all to know what their interests in. I've been teaching for thirty-three years. I didn't go in to teach them for the money. These kids who aren't interested in early childhood have a passion, I'm assuming, to work with children. We don't know if that means that they're going to own their own daycare center, be local babysitters, or have a master's degree in school administration, become a principal of an elementary school. But what I don't want to do, I completely agree with everybody that we need to build programs out there. I think we have a fantastic program that needs to be built on. But what I don't want to see is for us to be putting programs in place, spending a hundred thousand dollars hiring T teachers, over a hundred thousand dollars, and then have one, two, or three kids in each of those classes. I completely agree with, spoke upon this in our budget meetings, and Mr. Phob, I don't think you were there, but I completely agree with trying to get a welding program out there. All of us live in Naughton County, we all know, you can't find a plumber, you can't find a wrecker, you can't find a welder, you can't find this, and you can't find that. There are certain programs that our locality needs. And yeah, it would be great to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on building a program. But what I don't want is for the kids not to have a voice in what programs are built out there, and then do not have kids sign up for those classes. And maybe they're not gonna be interested in, and I mean, as juniors, it's a refreshment of sophomores, and they will be as juniors and seniors. But that's four years of paying for a program out there that isn't going to be a well-populated class. And so, you know, I think it is important to give some credence to the survey and have our students tell us what it is that they want to do, and, you know, subject to this area. Not everybody wants to work in IT, not everybody wants to work in education, not everyone wants to be a nurse. So we need to offer the kids the classes that they're interested in. We have a very, very limited amount of classes. I was shocked when I left Naughton County and went to Charlotte County and saw that Charlotte County offered three times the amount of elective classes that we offer here in Naughton County. Same region, my guess would probably be less funding, but I've been a while since I've been there, but they offered three times the amount of electives. Now, they didn't have a tech center, their tech classes were taught at high school and at middle school. I say that because we are short on a lot of electives, and we need the funding to build the programs. But I don't want, personally, I don't wanna make the mistake of putting programs out there that our kids have not told us that they're interested in having.
Well, the bottom line is this. He can, he's assistant principal right now in county. He can go through his middle school right now, he can identify the kids that are potential Am I correct? That's the case at every school, particularly. It was the case with you as a principal over in Island Middle School. My philosophy is, if I put Masonry over there in the votes app, and I take the kid that we are actually sticking in an art class over here that don't wanna be in art class, that's failing in anyway, if we go through, and it's called tracking, they did it back in the day, and it was a horrible thing, but I would much rather take the kids that are gonna drop out in this building anyway, and not complete, and walk around Naughton County because they can't leave. I would much rather take those kids and put them in a Masonry class. Because if I take him over there, put him in a Masonry class, and I teach him to lay brick and rock for eight months, if he drops out, by God, he can still, because he can go anywhere and lay rock and brick.
Well, Mr. Pettis, I was, keep, I thought, all I thought, let me ask you something. What about the kid that's not a dropout? What about the kid that's, I'd let him go to college? And I heard, and I just not picking on worship, but you said, we go out there, you know, think about, think about that term. Well, Steve, we're gonna send you out there. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, it's a stigma that I was like, well, I won't bear it with dropouts. You understand what I'm...
It's not, not when you consider that if a kid goes in here to this welding program and completes that welding program that they created out there through the community college.
Right.
And he gets paid fifty bucks an hour, is that a stigma when a kid goes to college and then occurs a hundred thousand dollars of debt? He goes out there and has zero debt and makes a hundred grand a year?
Yeah, well, and I, what I think, what Graham, what I'm saying is, you gotta get that person, get the bag. You know, what Shelley said, at age, what, freshman? I don't know.
We can't, you know, our problem is we like vision, that's all it is. We like vision. We don't wanna put it out there, we say, well, you know, most colleges tout students-teacher ratio being low. We look at having twelve kids, twelve, fifteen kids in the classroom, it's not cool, it shouldn't be. You shouldn't have thirty-five bodies, and you can't choose thirty-five bodies. You can give personal, hands-on instruction with twelve, with ten or twelve kids in the class. In an electrical class, you don't want that many kids in an electrical class. But you have to put it out there. They're touted. I'm telling you, they're selling you a bag of nothing. I want something for the kids, and not just the dropouts, but the ones that don't have anything when they leave here. Go through it, they're gonna give you the numbers. They come in here, they say we can't. They tell us, they get standard reporting, they give me some numbers. All these kids did such and such, a symbol, did you track them and find out if they went to college? Will you tell me all these kids that went to college? I'm not gonna allow them to sign up. I'm telling them to get a tuition, or they figure out they can't afford it, they can't go there. Give me concrete numbers. I'm a realist. We are not, I don't care what anybody says, until you see people getting out here in this country and getting jobs that they can sustain themselves. I don't need, the American dream is owning the home. You can't do it with a low-paying job. Cut it out. You're rid of it. I want kids to get jobs. Not everybody wants to work in IT, but you, you don't even know what you haven't seen. I have a bunch of kids, in fact, one of them did verbal, they got a couple of them working in IT. When Dr. Edwards put the IT course in, Pat, Anna, Owen, myself, and Dave Johnson teach the course. They enjoyed it. They can get jobs, it just wasn't structured, it was like just crap and other. I was looking to put kids in, but the kids enjoyed it. One of the kids did well, working in IT now, when they got an engineering degree, he loved IT so much. It's money, it's real money. I show you the amount of jobs that's out there, and they can't fill them all with basics, fixing computers. But I can't tell you about Maserati 'cause I don't own one. I can't tell you about Lincoln because I don't own one. I can tell you from experience what I know. I can tell you about IT because I work in it. Can't tell you about Spain because I've never worked in it. I don't know the law. But I'm telling you, we have to give kids opportunities to be successful. But I'm telling you, we have to give kids opportunities to be successful. Some over there are technical that showing it to us, full hands-on stuff. I know it's successful. It's like I want to give our red button doing this.
So how, Mr. Pettis, how is offering a building trades class or a child, early childhood class, aside from the money, how is that not giving our students something to be successful with?
Because it's like I tell my son, I don't sit in a school to get a trade, to get a, to get a degree in something that you can't find a job. The ideal for any parent is to send their kids to school to get an educational training so they can become self-sufficient. You know, I don't want a roommate. I had a roommate in college. I don't want a roommate. I don't want to deliver a roommate because I can't afford a family. I want to be able to go to them, Northern Geno, California, and have a good job because we're not going to fill them all up here. You gotta figure out of the box.
So, and I'm truly not trying to be argumentative, but you're very passionate about your job. I'm very passionate about my job. We all love what we're doing. There are going to be people who live wonderful, fulfilling lives who might not make us six-figure, whether it be in Nottaway or whether or not. I don't want to force a program down anybody's throat and force them to sign up for it if it's not something that they're not interested in. And I think that's why there's the value in the state surveys, that they make all of the school systems the state take so that the students have a voice. I get what you're saying in regards to pay, but I don't think that's the only thing that we need to be looking at right here. I want kids to be able to graduate and do what they want to do.
That's, I understand that. Some people, some people I've lived like that. I first made out, I believe in giving the kids the best, giving you a shot at the best. I want you to sit in the water. I want you to live outside of Nottaway County. I don't want you to come here and get nothing and leave here. It's like getting, it's like kind of the school fourteen years of getting a certificate of completion. It's like having a SPED kid come to school fourteen years to get a certificate of completion, not a high school diploma. And we tell you, we love the kids. But what can he or she do with a certificate of completion? See, these are the things you don't know. Well, it's worth the lesson. Piece of billy, I keep on my back watching because with billy, I got to go water. Certificate of completion, I can't even get a job in it because they require a high school diploma. We gotta be outside of the box. We gotta give kids the best. We gotta want more for our kids. That's all it is. Do I think that every kid will make six figures? No. The ideal is not for every kid to make six figures. The ideal is for every kid to be self-sufficient and to be able to take care of themselves. To not have to work a low-paying job, to not have to go, somebody's got to do it. Somebody's going to flip burgers. I'm hoping it's going to be somebody that's retired that's going to do it and not a kid fresh out of high school. That's what I'm saying. Because you can't make it that way. And I know a ton of them from the time I got here in nineteen ninety-three to right now, that got out there, didn't have it.
You need so many points. How does this board, considering budget requests, how do we take your argument and what you're all saying, you translate it into our budget considerations?
Just look at what we're having. Oh, that's all I'm asking you to do. Look, look at it. And I don't know, your job is not to regulate this board, double the board with this. But as you, as you, your job is to provide money. But as you provide money to this board, I'm asking you to get a return on your investment. You wouldn't take your money and invest it in something that would give you a return. You don't want to put a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for this to fund that, right? And have to wait forty years to get a return on your money. That's, in those terms, we both understand it was a return on your investment. So when you invest money into these programs, the return on the investment is how long you're supposed to do it. How many kids were certified? How many are working? What kind of jobs did they get? That speaks volumes. Because as all professionals and all adults, we understand that how difficult it is. We all, we all start with something. We understand how difficult it was to make that one certain amount. I'm just looking at the people, but I see them in the community. And I feel bad if it breaks off. I'm working to see how we're all being prepared.
Mr. Good points, Steve. The government, the government's data, the team aren't, we have to give data to show what's resulting from the rules. And it's not the wrong data, but it helps you make good decisions. But I know that, okay, I hear you.
I understand that you're right.
But that's, because they do, it's, 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 it's breaking my heart. I'm serious. I want it on the wall. I want to say it's impossible, but I want, I want to do my best. I'm not doing my best. I sit here and I know it's really cool and effort to make sure the kids have something on it, just to break it. Because you don't have a hundred kids in Canada for it. If, if, let's say Bob, if Bob's a high school student and his dad's working in the construction, I can't see him. Bob's a lovely boy. Bob knows hardworking because those things get out of them more often. But not everybody's floating together to be in an industry where they have a train and no people that can actually go work with all the standards and something. But also, if you like, if you look at, I love you, you're a male leader. He said, everything he said, he said, my all, I need my high school. I'm going to make sure it's like running the, I'm going to buy my own school for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I'm going to be doing, and he got his own pool. But my whole kids have, have a job. It's like they're forcing us to move. There's all the kids out of college. What are you going to do when you graduate? They all got a job. I know. It's complex. Yeah, I see. A lot of kids that are shy. That's, I don't know.
Any other comments tonight?
I'd like to leave you with one. Yes, we did come up with a five-year plan to vote thing. Yes, it's very important. All we're going to make the right decision every time. But we have, in the past two years, we've made progress. We put classes in there, kids with certifications. Are they the right classes? We won't know yet. But we are asked if we help continue moving forward, putting classes in, it may make a difference. They give a child that doesn't want to go to college that chance. There is room for improvement over there. There's room for all kinds of ideas. We're more of six over there. It's six people's opinion. Are they the right opinion though? But, I mean, we're drawing. And progress is being made. There are more students over there now than there were two years ago. There are more certificates and completes there. They kind of certified in something. They can't get a job. We can't put all the, all the classes in at one time. It's just, it's fundamentally impossible, but we're drawing. And I fairly believe in that program over there that, you know, we have a five-year plan. It's a good plan. We're making the right decisions. We're drawing. And that's what we're doing. I mean, we're, things are happening over there. And I think if you go and look, you will come back with an opinion that something needs to be fixed with it. This is great. So, I mean, it's, it's, can I be making some questions?
I'd like to add one more thing. And this, this is coming from me personally, having taken an early childhood class for my junior and senior year of high school, knowing I wanted to be a teacher, but also being a high school teacher. A lot, a lot of us have said, the kids who don't want to go to college. We have a wonderful program. My biggest beef with the program is we have a lot of kids who want to take classes over there. And this isn't, this isn't anything about the budget. I just, I just want to plant this seed. We have a lot of kids who do want to go to college or do want to go into the military, who do want to take classes over there and they can't fit it into their schedule. Even the kids, some of them with the standard diplomas. I'm not talking about our advanced studies diplomas, but those kids, some of them want to take classes over there. My oldest son would have loved to have taken a culinary class. He would have absolutely loved it. But he wouldn't have been able to fit it into his schedule. That's a whole other thing. But what I, what I want you to come away with is, we've got kids, other than the ones who are not wanting to go to college or other than the ones who are not wanting to go into the military, we have other kids who would be interested in this program. And if we can figure out some way, and I think that needs to be something that's added into our next five-year plan, is trying to find a way that, that this other group of students can get out there and take some of these classes. Those classes maybe, you know, they're not supposed to use plumbing or, you know. Maybe they want to learn how to be able to plumb their own home or fix a plumbing situation or something like that, or have a side business, make it fifty, seventy, eighty, ninety bucks an hour. Well, they are doing IT or teaching or truck driving or whatever it is that they do. So please keep in mind that right now, if the program is built and really focused on a smaller population of students, but it is growing, as Mr. Kippen said, I love what you just said, Jamie. It is growing. We have offered programs and I think we're on the right track. The trends and the research and data that we follow for the next couple of years will prove whether or not the programs that we have out there. But it would be wonderful if we could have a program out there that some of our other students could go to and take some classes out there. And like I said, that doesn't have anything right now to do with the budget. It doesn't have anything to do, has to do with scheduling. But I do believe that we have kids who aren't interested in taking classes out there who just can't fit it into their schedule. Maybe someday we could.
Thanks to all members of the school board that have shared kind of us this evening and shared information. Appreciate it. Chair of the school board, do you wish to proceed with adjournment?
Yes. Do I have a motion for this meeting to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. All in favor?
All in.
Board supervisor, do we need a motion? Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Second.